All right, welcome everyone to the July 16th, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Item number one, Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Clay, absent. Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tabke?
Here. All stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening, Mr. McNeil?
Staff has none, Mr. Mayor.
Anything from council? Entertainer motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Council Sherman, do I have a second?
Second.
Say my council Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consent business. Do we have anything to change with the consent business this evening, Mr. McNeil?
Staff has nothing, however, 10 F1 Derby Days, there's no presentation on this unless someone on council has something that could be added.
I would just suggest we put that on consent.
Perfect.
I'd like to pull D1, please.
D1, 10 D1? Nope, 10... 1.
4 D1.
4 D1, yeah, 4 D1.
4 D...
Anything else? Council Lehman?
Move the consent agenda as modified.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Say my council Whiting, Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 4A1 adopts Resolution Number 7332, setting a public hearing for the vacation of certain drainage utility easements in Opus MVW, an Opus MVW second edition. 4A2 adopts Resolution Number 72... 7328, setting a public hearing date for the vacation of drainage utility easements for property located at 1624-1684 Weston Court, Apple Ford in Shakopee. 4A3 approves a developer's agreement for Valley Park Business Center first edition. 4B1 approves a two-year agreement with Four Paws Animal Control LLC for the city's animal control services. 4C1 approves the execution of an extension agreement with WSBN Associates for additional professional services for lift station L16 grinder sewage installation at a cost not to exceed $39,138. 4C2 adopts Resolution Number 7330, approving plans and ordering the advertisements bids for the Valley Park Business Center improvements project number 2013-6. 4C3 adopts Resolution Number 7331, approving plans and ordering the advertisement for bids for the E-Shakopee industrial sewer projects, project number 2013-4. 4D1 was removed from consent agenda. 4E1 authorizes the replacement of the community center entrance doors. 4F1 approves payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $2,822,942.9. 4F2 approves minutes of the June 18th and June 25th, 2013 city council meetings. 4F3 approves the application grants temporary on sale liquor license to the Church of St. Mark, 350 South Atwood Street, for Yule Fest to be held July 26th through 28th, 2013. 4F4 approves applications and grants temporary on sale three two malt liquor licenses to the Shakopee J.C.'s for two fenced-in beer gardens at Huber Park for Derby Days, Thursday, August 1st through Saturday, August 3rd. 4F5 approves notice, or provides notice at the public hearing set for July 29th at 7:00 PM with data card will be a joint meeting with the Scott County Board of Commissioners. Excuse me, 10F1 was added to the consent agenda and that authorizes certain street closures and other city participation for the 2013 Derby Days.
Thank you, sir, very nice job, as always. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We move on to item number five. Recognition of involved citizens by city council. First, I'll ask if there's anyone not from the union who's here to speak, not with the labor dispute, who's here to speak tonight? If there's anybody on an item that is not on the agenda? All right. That's on the agenda, so you'll have a chance. Thank you. Anyway, all right, you're ready to go. Are you the short guy?
Yeah, I'm the real short guy.
All right.
First of all, I want to thank the council and the mayor for this opportunity.
Could you please introduce yourself and sign in with name and address, please?
Sure.
Sorry, we gave pause to your presentation.
That's okay.
Details, details.
All right, again, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity and I will be short. My name is Tim Mackey. I'm the business manager of Labor's Local 563 out of Minneapolis. We represent approximately 5,000 members. We have many members that live here in Shakopee and some of which are behind me here tonight. And in particularly, these individuals behind me are part of what you call the labor dispute. They're on strike. They've been on the picket line for over 30 days. And what they're here tonight, we've reached out as a union to some of the council members and all that, and what we'd like to do is ask for some help. We think the city and the council here has done some great work in this city as far as creating jobs, you know, whether it be tax breaks or whatever, to spur growth and to create new jobs, and we applaud that work that this council has done. But what we're asking in this instance is that they would get involved with the over 40 good jobs that we have right now going on in Cree-Tex that these people are on strike over. We believe that, you know, just getting involved and talking to the company and asking them to get back to the bargaining table and ask them to reconsider some of their outrageous demands would be really beneficial to what we're trying to do. And that's get some of these hardworking people back to work, back on the job. It'll be good for Shakopee. What's going on right now is not good for Shakopee. It's bad on all fronts. So that's why we're here, and then, like I said, I said I'd be short, so I'll turn it over to one of the residents here. Steve Vistrum, you want to come up? Think you're gonna have to sign in quick.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Hi, I'm Steve Vistrum. Been a resident of Shakopee for 20-plus years. Been at the job for 21 of them. And speaking for my fellow employees here, we've been on strike for a while. And has to do with our pension. We feel we contributed quite a bit to the city of Shakopee. I know we make a lot of stuff for the local area down the road. I know, kind of nervous right now, I can't give specifics. But, no, I know we contribute a lot of... Lots of money to the local area, whether we eat in this area after work, contribute to local businesses. We've had many union meetings in this area, and we'd still like to keep it going. We've had threats as far as, you know, closing companies and stuff, and we don't want to do that either. We definitely like to stay in this area. And, yeah, it's just as simple as that. We've been here for a long time, everybody likes to stay in this area, keep their job. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that'd like to speak?
Well, we tried to keep it, they were... The ask was just for one, so we kept the one, and if you want more, we...
I appreciate that. So, we aren't going to take any action on anything this evening. This is, as I understand, purely informational, and there's nothing that we as a city will do at this point, but I'm very glad that you came to show us what's going on and to show us the force as to what is happening, and we appreciate you being here. And we'll... We got a very good packet, just so everybody knows, we got a packet of information, all council members did, as to what is happening, and we'll look at it and I'm sure be in touch.
Okay, thank you, and the last thing is we will be reaching out some more, and we would love the opportunity to have some time with each of you, to explain to you what's going on, give you any information more that we have, and answer any of your questions. Because we think information and communication is what it takes to get some of this stuff done, so we will be looking for... To get together if that's okay with you.
And what, can you just explain, what are you... What are you looking for? What is the outcome?
Well, the outcome is to get these people back toward the fore deal. What we're looking for you as leaders of this community is to reach out to the company. There's been many of strikes that have been settled for just a community leader, a politician or anyone, reaching out to the company and be that person to break the ice and the stalemate. And, you know, as leaders of this community, we look upon you guys to at least attempt it. We know you don't have a magic wand and these are complicated issues, but we'd like to inform you on these issues, and we'd like to have you, you know, reach out and try to help.
Got it. Thank you very much.
For leadership, we have a draft statement of support. We're asking people to, in their own words, indicate to the company that, you know, we think this is, you know, the best way forward.
All right, I'm gonna be that guy and say if you're gonna talk, you gotta go up there. And, all right, there you go. Thank you. Is this the same that's in here or is this different?
No, this is a... This is a statement of support.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you very much, everyone for being here, I appreciate it, and I appreciate you keeping it short. That is very kind of you. And we'll be moving on to the next item on the agenda, the public hearings tonight. All right, item number... Did you guys want to stay for all this? You can stay and have fun with us if you want to. That's totally up to you guys. Thank you, Steve, very nice job. All right, we are gonna move to item number 6A, public hearing for vacation of public right-of-way adjacent to 1301 Third Avenue West. We have a motion to open public hearing. Council Whiting?
I'll move to open a public hearing.
I'll second.
Say my council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Leek?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. As you noted, this is a request to vacate a public alley at 1301 Third Avenue West. It is adjacent to County Road 69. In the packet, you have a graphic which depicts the alley location as well as its rather interesting old graphic of Kepner's Edition. I was impressed that Mr. Noble was able to find that for you.
Mr. Leek, I'm not sure if the microphone is way too far away from you, but I don't think you're getting picked up by it.
Try that again, how's that?
Better, thank you.
All right, very good. The property is along Third Avenue, County Road 69 is here on the west side. The alley proposed to be vacated, which has never been improved, is in this location. Jefferson Street here has previously been vacated. As you saw from the report, we did have comments from engineering requesting that as a condition of this vacation, the city obtain an easement for storms who are along the east property line. And I don't know if you can see it very well, but I've roughly depicted the 20-foot easement that they've requested along the east property line, and then a continuation of a 10-foot, and then a sanitary sewer easement on the north side, because there is a sanitary sewer line there. The resolution for your approval does include those conditions this evening, and with that, I will open myself to any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Leek? Mr. Whiting?
Is there any concern about the easements from the business owners, property owners?
Not that we are aware of.
Council Lehman?
Is there any issues in the future of 69 on that side of the property, which would be the west side of the property?
We've looked at that and analyzed it. We don't think that there are either from the standpoint that 69 would be vacated or need to be expanded so that it would affect the area that's proposed to be vacated.
Okay, I wasn't looking at it from vacated 69, I was looking at it for any kind of future services running up 69 and into these properties, so we would come on Third Street...
And again, we looked at it from that perspective. We don't anticipate any additional services in that immediate area.
All right, any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on the public hearing this evening? Yes, sir. Come on up. Name, address, introduce, all that fun stuff.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. My name is Brian Varland, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Miller Property Holdings. I have with me David Miller of Miller Property Holdings, if there are any questions. We were here on January 8th at that meeting for the vacation of Jefferson Street. This is the second piece of that. We didn't have time at that time to do it, so we've done it as the second half here. We are anticipating, if the council agrees with our request, to have a torrance proceeding subsequent, which will include an easement for the utilities that will go on to it, and the torrance proceeding will resolve the Jefferson Street vacation and this alley vacation. I'm open to any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? I think that we're all good. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, entertainer motion to close the public hearing. Council Lehman?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Say my council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Council Lehman?
Offer Resolution 7329, resolution approving the vacation of the public right-of-way, the alley north of Third Avenue West, west of vacated Jefferson Street, move its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Say my council Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item B, public hearing for Compass Data Center LLC. Entertainer motion, open public hearing. Council Sherman?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for Compass Data Center LLC.
Council Whiting?
Second.
Vote on that motion.
Mr. DiMaggio, oh, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Council Lehman. Mr. DiMaggio?
Hi, good evening. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to open the public hearing for Compass Data Center and to continue the meeting until August 7th, and hopefully we'll have another public hearing on August 7th to discuss the potential of applying for a Minnesota investment fund and a business development public infrastructure fund on behalf of Compass Data Center.
Any questions?
Is there anybody in the audience tonight that would like to make a comment?
Is there anybody in the audience tonight that'd like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mayor, members of the council, I'm Jordan Olson, 249 Mount Street. I guess I wasn't here at the last meeting, however, I'm just kind of curious to know whether or not Compass Data Center has really gotten back to us with any kind of additional data that we didn't have last time, since they are requesting or we want to give them another $500,000 of Minnesota's money.
Mr. DiMaggio?
So I think, as you know, when Compass Data Center first approached the city, they were talking about possibly 40 jobs, and at that time, they had approached DEED about some financing. DEED had said potentially they could get $250,000 in a Minnesota investment fund and $250,000 in a business development public infrastructure fund. It was, of course, contingent upon their application. And since the job numbers changed now to 18 jobs, DEED is saying, you know, they'd like to negotiate how much money is actually going to be given to Compass, and that's kind of where we're at now, is Compass and DEED are in the process of negotiating what they could potentially apply for. They would ask the city to sponsor an application, so either we would be the person doing the application, or the business would apply directly to DEED. That's also something that's in the process of being worked out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Council Lehman?
Make a motion to continue public hearing until August 7th.
Do we have a second? Say my council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We move on now to business removal consent agenda, item number seven. We will go...
4D1.
4D1. Mr. McNeil?
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we could defer this until Ms. Wilson gets here, she was the one that put the draft together, so...
Yep, absolutely.
...put it later in the agenda.
Okay. We will move that around, we'll move on to item 10A1, preliminary and final plat of Valley View Business Park first edition, Resolution Number 7327. Oh, I skipped through that. This is not my meeting, sorry. Item number eight, I circled that, I apologize. We're gonna go back to item number eight. We will entertain a motion of recess for Economic Development Authority meeting. Council Lehman?
Motion recess to the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Do we have a second? Say my council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Whiting?
All right, we'll call to order the July 16th, 2013 meeting of the Economic Development Authority. Ms. Weckman, please make note of the roll.
Yes, Mr. President.
I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Sherman, seconded by Mr. Lehman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries. We have items on the consent agenda tonight, minutes, EDA bill list, authorization for street fund banners. I have a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved?
Moved by Tabke, Mr. Lehman.
Actually, I'd like to remove the banners if they're on consent.
Okay, we'll go right into a discussion on the banners.
There's motion on the floor.
Oh, we got a motion?
Yeah.
So you want to approve 31 and 3D for consent?
Right.
Okay, so we have motion, it's been seconded with the approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Lehman?
The question that I had was, my understanding is this is gonna go from the bridge out here east only, and it doesn't do anything on the other side. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I could ask Mr. Looney maybe to speak to that, but at this point, I believe that those streetlights do not have the poles on it for the banners. I believe that the banners that have the streetlights with the poles start as soon as you cross the bridge by danger fields, and they go up to the next crossing would be 69.
Mayor, members of the council, Council Lehman, Commissioner Lehman, they do have the banners. I think there was a, I think a point of discussion that the majority of the businesses are on First Avenue, have the more, I mean, that was the first intention of those poles. We can always add more later if we so desire, but I think they do have banners. But there's only a few poles on County Road 69, not the majority that we have on.
And...
I was...
I'm sorry.
We might even, I don't, we might have enough to cover some of those poles. 80 banners will might cover.
Mr. Lehman?
Well, what I was thinking is at least going to, I mean, if we're gonna do this, you should at least go to the rent building and you've got some of the businesses probably down to Scott Street. And then your open area down to R. And I really wasn't thinking of going all the way around the corner up to 169, I was just thinking about catching the business, two blocks or whatever it is from the bridge to this side.
Catch a few as they come in?
Right.
Mr. Looney?
Council, what we have is 29 poles on the 69 section and 50 on the 101, so that'd be 78, so we estimate 80. So we can do all the poles that are, have banner arms.
I have a question on that. Are business owners allowed to ask that they don't get a banner? Maybe it blocks their sign to... That's been an issue in the past, and wondered how we'd handle that.
At this point, I don't know that that's something that's been discussed, but I think that you make a valid point, and the banners that we did intend to order are two feet wide by four feet long, so that may be a recommendation that you would like to make tonight would be instead of ordering the 48-inch banners, that we order maybe a 36-inch banner, but I'm not sure how many people would be affected by that.
I think we'd work with the individual businesses if somebody just really has an issue with it. Certainly, I don't think it's our position to force it on them.
I just remember that coming up in the past. Any other concerns on the banners? Then I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Lehman?
Does the motion have to be specific to the size? Or...
You have a design here already that is already sized, right, the four-foot?
And they can, they're actually gonna make a test banner for us so we can see how it looks. If that's a concern at the time that we get it, I think then, you know, we could say we'd like to have a smaller banner ordered, and that's one thing that we liked with those companies, that they said they would supply us with a test banner to make sure it worked. on our poles, it fit correctly. We could verify the size.
You got a banner stationed out on your lamp by your business there?
No, maybe, well, President, maybe I can ask a question. What size was the banners that the chamber put up last time around?
They were 48.
I think they were.
I have no idea.
Yeah, because I bought some, so...
Were they 48?
Yeah.
All right. They seem to be fine.
I don't think it was too large.
All right.
Is there a motion? Do we need a second?
We need a motion. Was that a motion, Mr. Lehman?
I'll make a motion to authorize a purchase of up to 80 banners from graphics shop that cost not to exceed $3,600 from the EDA budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tabke, second. All those in favor, any discussion? First?
I have a quick question and a discussion. Can we have them up by Derby Days?
I will definitely call her tomorrow and see if we can negotiate our contract with them, all the prices, everything is set, they have the design set, so I think that that's something that we could ask them.
Perfect. That'd be great.
Do you want to do a test banner first?
And I think they will, and I think that will be something they can produce fairly quickly.
Okay. We'll do our best.
Yeah, hopefully.
Well, even if you go with the, sorry, Mr. President, if you go with the 48, and if there's individual businesses here and there that it's blocking a sign, and they request not to have one on that location, what I'm hearing is there's going to be flexibility, so I don't think there shouldn't be a problem with the size. If there is, we just won't put one there.
Right.
Can I add something else? I think it's important to note that on the banners, you can adjust the arms, so you could bring them down lower or raise them up higher, and so that's something that we can determine once we get them. Pinky has told me that they're adjustable, so he can figure out...
I think they should be consistent.
They will, they'll all be consistent, but I think we can figure out what the best height for all of them would be once we get the sample.
Okay, any other discussion? Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Last item is adjourned to Tuesday, August 20th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Mr. Lehman?
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, August 20th, 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned.
Thank you, President Whiting. We now reconvene the Chicago City Council meeting, and now we can move on to item number 10A1, Preliminary and Final Platte of Valley View Business Park, First Edition.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. Just by way of a little context, you will remember that this is property located on Fourth Avenue. It is distinguished currently by a number of pine trees that have been there for a number of years. You previously approved a regiding and rezoning of this property from major recreation to light industrial, and Skanel Properties has come forward with a preliminary and final platte application. That preliminary platte application was reviewed last Thursday by the Planning Commission. Remember, under our ordinances, the preliminary platte only goes to the Planning Commission. It then comes to you with their recommendation, and in this case, as with many, the final platte is in front of you as well. The site is about 34.5 acres in size, and it is proposed to, in the long term, create three lots. You see them in Exhibit C1, that's a part of your packet. The first project that they are proposing will be on Lot 1, and they show additional structures on Lot 3 and Lot 2. This area on Fourth is an exception. And the final platte is actually just a platte of Block 1, which is where that first project is proposed to be. And just for reference, Fourth Avenue East is to the north of the site, Shenandoah is to the west. You can see on the graphics that are a part of your packet that Pinewood Estates, CIC is located to the west as well. At the public hearing, we did have a number of people from the adjoining neighborhood who were there, some of whom testified, and I will try to characterize some of their comments, but I believe we have some of those folks here this evening. They were concerned, if I can go back to that previous platte drawing, or actually, I'll go to the one that shows the landscaping. And just parenthetically, let me note that with the removal of the trees on this site, if I recall correctly, there are about 1,000 trees that would need to be planted as a result of the removal under the Chapter 7 Tree Management Regulations. They propose three driveways along Shenandoah Drive for that first project. One of the concerns was the number of driveways, and my explanation at that meeting was, in terms of getting employees out of this facility, which we understand will be primarily an eight-to-five kind of employment center, having those driveways, which is an acceptable number under our standards, would vacate the parking lot more quickly than having a single one, for example. Another concern that was expressed was that the driveways line up with existing public streets or access points, and at the public hearing, I pointed out that that is more desirable in having them offset. Offsetting them causes more turning conflicts than matching up with the existing streets. Another concern was about screening of headlight wash, for example, from the parking lot, and Mr. Elam is here from Skanel, he can explain in more detail, but they are proposing a small berm, I believe in the nature of about two feet, along Shenandoah with plantings on top of that. Now, our ordinance talks about screening for headlight wash of about three feet, whether it's berming or vegetation, and so that is generally consistent. Another concern was about truck traffic, and if I recall correctly, Mr. Elam at the Planning Commission indicated that the user that they're working with would have between two and four vehicles per day entering the site, and you can see the dock area is pretty limited and away from the residential neighborhood. So the request of you this evening is to approve the preliminary and final platte with the conditions that have been presented to you in the draft resolution, that's a part of your packet. It is Resolution 7327, approving a preliminary and final platte of Valley View Business Park, First Edition, not to be confused with Valley Park Business Center, which is the location of the Emerson and Otis Developments further to the east. With that, if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Councilman Lehman?
Mr. Leek, how do the trucks get to that docking area?
My understanding of the site plan, and Mr. Elam will correct me if I'm wrong, is that there are two access points, basically. One of them is along Shenandoah, but one is on Fourth, and they propose to have two-way access. So coming off of 101, the most likely access would seem to me to be off of Fourth Avenue, but he may have had more specific discussions with the prospect that they are working with, and I would ask that he address that as well.
Doesn't look very wide right there.
Pardon?
Doesn't look very wide for a semi right there.
Again, I'll let him ask that. Again, this is the platte. We are not approving a site plan, per se, here, even though they've indicated the approximate site plan.
And then the second question, Mayor, was the berming for the headlight wash is two feet, and you mentioned that our requirements are three feet.
You'll notice on the landscape plan, that's a part of your packet, there are substantial plantings indicated along Shenandoah in that area as well, so should meet that requirement.
That's Whiting.
Regarding those plantings, and you talked about the 1,000 trees in our tree management plan, this, because this was a site of tree farm, basically, we had some limitations to what we were going to require them. Is the 1,000 trees part of that negotiated process?
That's my understanding, in that it comes out of our Natural Resource Director's recommendations, which have been included in the draft resolution in front of you this evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Elam, do you have anything you would like to add?
Tim Elam, Skanel Properties, from Adina, Minnesota. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for having us tonight. I have a formal presentation, if you guys want to see it, or I can just answer the questions proposed or asked by Mr. Lehman.
Formal presentation, like PowerPoint presentation and all that? Would you like to go through it, or...
It's totally up to the members of the board.
Mayor, members of the council, if it's the same presentation that was...
It is.
...made available to the Planning Commission, it's relatively brief, probably illustrative, so might suggest that you see it.
Thank you. Go for it.
Okay.
Michael, these bunch of trees are just shrubs. These must be shrubs.
I'm not sure I'd have to look at the card.
Remember, we made a comment about they have trees planted there.
I don't see that's ready to go.
But that...
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, thank you again for having us. We're in front of you for preliminary and final platte for the Valley View Business Center Business Park. It is located at the corner of Fourth and Shenandoah, the southeast corner. Little bit of an overview. Mr. Leek had recently stated that we rezone this from major recreation to industrial. Our intent here is to develop three buildings in this park. Anticipated uses would be office, warehouse, distribution, manufacturing, research, and development, with a total development of 425,000 feet. Our objective here is to develop buildings as users come into the market, and that's why we are plating the first platte. So this is the building of focus. This just shows you concepts of what it could look like in the future, but the final platte will accommodate 175,000 square-foot building. It has 430 parking spaces around the facility, and it's on about 13 acres of land. We will put in, we will masquerade the site, put in regional detention to support the three pads, and design a 30-foot-wide road to support these three building pads. Here is the preliminary platte. This is the platte we are going, taking the final, and this we will platte as we move forward with future development. So here, it shows Block 1 of Lot 1 of the final platte. The 175,000 square feet is going to look somewhat like this. It's going to be a hard-wall precast building with a lot of glazing around the building, four main entrances facing west, and then two entrances facing east. This area is actually getting further upgrades to it, because it'll be the main entrance point to the building, which will be right from the corner of Fourth and Shenandoah. So that's our main focal point of the building, where our client would like their customers to enter the facility, but the employees that will be supported by this 430 parking field will have six entrance points into the building. We have done an extensive tree survey and worked with the city to come up with this landscaping plan, and we will be replanting close to 1,100 plantings in this development. And as far as the truck traffic here, this road was, is 30 feet wide. Our intention is to bring all truck traffic in here. The user of this facility, it's mainly office, research, and development, really has a very small portion, 12,000 square feet or so of storage area. It's really going to be to store products that they test and do research on. The trucks, they're telling us two to four trucks a day will be coming down this access drive into their truck courtyard and back out this way. So we've tried to design the site to screen the residential area to the west by the building and have an aesthetically pleasing building on the west and, well, really, all elevations, but the west and north elevations are really going to appear like an office building, a high-tech building. So with that, I'm glad to answer. Any questions anyone has?
Questions?
Councilman Lehman?
If it's an eight-to-five operation, and there's roughly 350 employees, 70 overflow parking stalls, I assume they're all coming at once and leaving at once?
Well, it's a typical business office environment where, you know, the shift is, you know, a typical workday is eight to five, but I know in a lot of companies, people start arriving between 6:00 so they can leave early, and I think the traffic pattern is going to be mainly 6:00 to 9:00 AM, and then something like 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
That's Whiting.
And you mentioned it was one shift.
Yes.
One work shift.
That's Whiting.
Continue on. We had talked about all the trees and everything, and on the landscaping plan, is there going to be a sufficient enough block between the neighbors on the Shenandoah side towards the west? There's a lot of trees in there, and it's a nice picture of circles, but...
Yeah, I...
Right now, they have a beautiful, you know, pine forest there. I know developing that, most of those trees will have to go and be replanted, but, you know, are we looking out for those neighbors that haven't had to look at that in the past?
Well, yeah, we are planting it with a combination of evergreens, so during the winter months, there's still a barrier there, and then shade trees and ornamental trees. There's a lot of trees. We are working with the city, Parks and Recs, Natural Resource Division, Arbor, Tree Arboris, we have a landscape architect.
It looks like you've done a lot of work here.
We are glad to move trees around anywhere, but we have really focused on a lot of plantings along Shenandoah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience like to talk? You can come on up. Name and sign in, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Ken Longren, and I'm with the Pinewood Twin Home Association. And our homes, in our association, some that back up to Shenandoah, which are exposed to our living rooms and dining rooms, if you're on the patio. The traffic that comes out, especially the one on Pinewood, in summer, yes, but come along about, I guess, October, November, we get headlights, and we have people on the corner that they'll be shining in their bedrooms and their living rooms, probably up until March. What I've asked for, or we have asked for, is a berm across from the development on Shenandoah, because we have like a 24-foot outlot that runs from Pinewood down to the ballroom, that they would like to have like a berm of evergreens, you know, close together to defray the headlights and also the noise and whatever comes with all this traffic. And this is a request from the association and the neighbors, if this is all possible, if it could be done by the developer or the city, because there is enough room, there is 24 feet outlot between Shenandoah or the legal city property to our property. And that's my request, or our request for the council.
Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I want to make sure I understand the request. Are you requesting that that be built on the west side of Shenandoah?
Yes.
And would you have any, would you be opposed to the plantings that they have on this design on the east side, then being minimal to do it on the west?
Because those are going to be trees, when cars come out, you know, excuse me, they branch up, and the lights are under. Those are going to be trees when cars come out, you know, excuse me, they branch up and the lights are under, and it's, it's not going to stop the lights. Evergreens or something or heavy bush or, in that concept, will do the, do the job.
So instead of putting them out here on their design, put what's here on the other side?
Yeah. Something to defray the, the lights and the noise and the debris and the smell and
Okay.
gas mules.
No, I'm confused.
All right.
So you're saying take some of the trees off of, off of this plant and put it on the west, or match mirror image this, this side to the west side?
Mayor, and that's why I was asking if he was comfortable with taking some of these that they're required to put in here and making this less and putting them on the other side, so that there's not a, a double burden on the developer.
Do, but done by the developer.
Or, or at least funded by the developer. I don't know if the developer has the authority to plant them in the cities right away on the other side.
Is that part of the final plat? Portion that we need to discuss tonight, or will that be?
Mayor, members of the council, I might suggest that the city attorney weigh in on requiring that on the west side, which is extra plat. We have not discussed that to date, and that wasn't a specific request at the planning commission.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, it's, requiring a development to do off-site improvements is something you would have to negotiate with the developer, and you'd have to get access to that property. With this image here, I can't tell who owns the property or where exactly it would go. But you'd be requiring a developer to do work, not on their property, to minimize impacts, and again, that's, that's something you'd have to discuss with the developer.
Councilman?
Well, I, I think we're looking at it a little bit wrong here. We're not requiring them to put them, put them on the west side. We're actually allowing them to put in less than what's required and taking the difference in lieu of putting them, putting them there and us putting them over here on our own right of way. So it's, it's kind of like when you take two trees down and you, instead of putting them back up, you pay the city a fine, and then the city's supposed to buy some trees.
Sir, do you have a petition or information from other residents out in the area? Is this, is this yours?
Oh, just the ones on, on Pinewood and along the Shenandoah, and also on the corner of, of Timber and Pinewood. And the reason for this coming up a little late, now, we just got notice of this on the twentieth of June. We knew nothing about this. Some people in the organization knew, and maybe it was behind closed doors, but we, our president of our association was not aware of it, our president of our master association was not aware of it. It was all surprise to everybody when we, when this letter came out, only to a few. I don't think it was probably eight and out of ninety-seven families, members that got this letter. And when we were aware of what was happening.
Can we explain some of those details? Why? I think it's adjoining properties.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, we can, and please note that notice was required at the time the property was reguided and rezoned as well. That notice requirement under the city's ordinance is, is that we send individual notice to property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the property that's the subject of the application. So when we received an application for the preliminary and final plat, the preliminary plat required a public hearing. We not only posted the notice, put it in the newspaper, but sent individual notices to those properties that were within three hundred and fifty feet of this property. So you're right, not everyone in Pinewood Association got notice. Those within three hundred and fifty feet, however, did.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from, just give us a minute here. Anybody else from the association would like to speak? Oh, you know you want to. Come on. Well, you have to be, you have to be at the microphone, and you have to say your name and address. See, you stood up. Reeling her in. But the folks at home can't hear you, and we have millions of people watching this show.
The show.
If the Kardashians are on, these folks are beating them in the ratings.
I'm Dorothy Lundgren. Ken is my husband. And our concern is the noise and all the traffic, which will be almost in our living room. I think we're only eighty feet, aren't we, from, from where the new building will be? And all we ask is either put up a nicer, thicker fence, or if we could have evergreens that would buffer some of that noise and the headlights. Winter's coming, and you know from morning until evening, at five o'clock, it's dark, seven o'clock, it's dark. We will be having that in our living rooms, in our bedrooms. And that's all we ask, is that if that could be done for us. And there's twenty of us on timber court. Most of them are on vacation, so that's why we're here speaking for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Elam, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, I just wanted to respond to the request for, for a tree screening. The developers, Scannell Properties, we have no objection to taking some of our close to eleven hundred trees, if the city would like, and planting some of them in the adjoining neighbors' backyards. We would need to work through that process and approval, but we have no objection to taking some trees and moving them across the street, because we have a lot of trees here. And if you specifically look at, I don't know how you point at this, but behind some of those buildings.
You can just point.
Yeah, so the future buildings, there's, there's definitely trees out there that probably nobody's going to see that much. Maybe we want to screen from Canterbury, but some of the interior trees, some of that stuff, we can move across the street. So we are glad to work with the citizens and the city to do what you think is right.
Thank you. Mr. Leek, what, if anything, needs to be done with regards to that request this evening?
Mayor, Members of the council, at this point, I don't think anything, the landscape plan is actually approved at the time of building permit, and so I think we have the flexibility for them to continue to work with the neighborhood, unless Mr. Thompson thinks I'm in error there.
Mr. Mayor, do they need to come back for a site plan approval for the building, for this building?
Administratively.
Just administratively, but it's site plan, not just
It is site plan.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if, if you're comfortable giving staff the discretion on this, you could, you could do that. The devil might be in the details of this one, and I, I just don't know whether you'd be able to work something out on this. Just ask them up at the last minute here, and without a plan in front of you, I, I'd be a little concerned that you might not get what you're looking for, and you might need to give staff some direction on this.
All right, Councilman Lehman?
We really can't say this has to happen or it's going to happen, because first thing we have to do is allow staff to get in touch with Spuck and some of the other utilities folks and find out what's there to see if we can even put a tree there. So, you know, we're hearing from the developer that they're willing to, to consider this with some of the, you know, as a credit from what they're required to do. So at this point, I think I would just let staff look at it and see what is possible. I mean, maybe we find out there's a great big high-pressure gas line over there that we can't bury trees there. We don't know that. So it would be kind of early to say we're going to try to do something that we can't physically do, but on the same token, if it is possible, I'd like to see an effort made to screen the headlights.
So do we have consensus just to give direction? Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, with that comment, maybe the best thing to do would just be to adopt the resolution approving the plat and then do a follow-up motion directing staff to work with the developer and the neighbors at the time of site plan approval to see if landscaping across the west side of Shenandoah can be accommodated. But do it by two separate motions.
Perfect. Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Councilman?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Correct?
This is not a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
So you're ahead.
You can make a motion.
Go for motion. You can keep going.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve Resolution number seventy-three twenty-seven. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Valley View Business Park First Edition, subject to the conditions as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
So, Councilman Lehman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Councilman?
Make a motion, Mayor, to direct staff to work with the developer on their landscape plan as discussed tonight, working to, if possible, to give credit for plantings on the west side of Shenandoah, if at all possible, for what's required on the east side.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Senator, Councilwoman Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. You guys want to, Mr. Thompson? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. Now, we're going to go back to item number. This is four D one, approval of revised job description authorization to advertise for Planner One. Councilwoman Whiting?
I just thought it was a good time to bring this up and talk about it and decide if this is a position we want to fill. I know we've had some early discussion about possibly expanding in the engineer department, and if this is something we want to wait till half the year is full, how, I guess, my question is, how, how much of a need is here right now for to fill this position right away?
Mayor, Members of the council, Councilor Whiting, before Ms. Wilson answers, let me say I think that there is a substantial need. You are very much cognizant of the economic development that's occurred since last year, but what you may not be thinking about is that that economic development, each and every one of those projects, from TriStar to Sanmar, to Compass Data Centers, to the project here on Scannell's Valley View Business Park, to Opus's proposed building, have involved updates or new environmental assessment worksheets, vacation of rights of way and easements, plating of lots, in some cases, conditional use permits and variance proposals. I took a look right before the meeting. We are sitting in July at about forty case logs in the planning department, which is probably on pace for about eighty total for the year. The last few years, we were at about sixty. So we have a lot of development activity going on. More than that, I've been working with Julie Linehan, your finance director, on how we can better track, record, trigger review of a variety of documents that relate to those development proposals. And you may have noticed in the job description, in the second paragraph underneath essential duties, Ms. Wilson and I have included language that goes to that specifically and coordinating with other departments. In addition to that, for a number of years, we have not had much budget for going outside to do additional studies. You have an RFP that Ms. DiMaggio has put out for a study on First Avenue. There's a matching grant of fifteen thousand that goes along with that. But what Ms. Wilson and I have talked about is building more staff capacity in our existing planners who remain with us, Mark Noble and Kyle Saboda, to do some of that kind of work rather than always looking outside. So my view, perhaps with a little bit of perspective, is that with the development uptick that we've had in the commercial industrial area, there's a substantial need.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson, do you have anything to add?
No, I would say that Mr. Leek has covered the same topics that I was going to cover with, maybe I would just expound on one point he said, which is, we lost a very senior member of the planning staff that had a strong skill set and handled a lot of the detailed and high-level work for us. We have planners on staff that are interested and willing to take on that level of detail and get the additional education and certifications that they may need to do that successfully. But if we don't bring in a Planner One to take the day-to-day counterwork off their plates, it's unrealistic to expect them to be able to grow and expand into these higher-level job duties while still doing all of the day-to-day work that needs to be done with the caseload that Mr. Leek represents, so.
Councilwoman Whiting?
Well, that, that answers my question. I think it's time that we, you know, look at these job descriptions as they come up and discuss them rather than pass them under consent a lot of times, so I'm comfortable with it.
Thanks. Yeah, I had a lot of the same questions you had, just as to how the changes that are happening within planning department, and most importantly, and this question for you, Mr. Leek, the transit portion of it, as we move forward with deciding what happens with that, I don't know how much of an impact that has on workload, and so if we make major changes with how transit happens, does that dramatically affect your department, or how does that work? And does it make sense to make these decisions now and not wait until that transit part is figured out, or that I'm just?
Mayor, Members of the council, I'm happy to address that. As the council knows, at the TRB, we've talked with Met Council, Southwest Transit, MBTA, and by the way, MBTA is losing a very significant and senior operations person to CH two M Hill in Chicago. That'll be interesting for Beverly at MBTA to, to fill that need. But I think even if a recommendation is made to the city council here and in Prior Lake to, if you will, merge operations with one of those providers, as was said in connection with another item, the devil is in the details. That's probably going to take some time to work through. And currently, I think it's fair to say that the bulk of transit time in terms of charges is mine and not our other planner who is assigned to transit, Kyle Saboda. So the loss of that, I think, is still going to require some oversight on the part of city staff. Not completely do away with the obligations, but where you may see a diminishment is ultimately for the community development director, because I have spent, for the seventeen years I've been here, a big load of time on transit. That's how we got from having three buses doing dial-a-ride within the city to having Blue Express and a circulator service instead.
Councilman Lehman?
Let me see if I, if I have, correct me when I get done if I'm wrong, Mr. Leek, but this position basically is going to replace Julie, who I, sorry to see her go, but she was doing more than what we're really going to be using this person to be doing to begin with. And what, a lot of what she was doing is now being done by Kyle and Mr. Noble, and our front desk is basically a little bit open at this point.
Councilor Lehman, I think that's basically correct with Ju- The skill set that Chris Wilson referred to is one that I would suggest to you both I and Julie have. And in the case of all developments, I am something of a final staff voice before it comes to you because of my years of experience. But yes, we have put Mr. Noble and Mr. Saboda into the fire with a number of pretty significant developments. The Scannell property, the Valley View Business Park, may only be three lots, but it's a substantial industrial plat with a lot of complicated factors that goes into it. The same was true of the Opus plat, which Mr. Noble took over after Ms. Kleema left. And what I proposed and discussed with Mr. Wilson is, we have some folks in Mr. Saboda and Mr. Noble with some years of experience, and it makes sense to me to build additional capacities in them and look for someone who can do some better coordination of those procedural documentary kinds of things that I've been talking with Ms. Linehan about, as well as doing GIS, cooperating where need be with the PD on enforcement, but not doing the level of enforcement that we've done now that we have a CSO. So that's, that's the thought. We've got some folks with a lot of experience, maybe not the full skill set that either Julie or I had, but the potential to build that, which I think ultimately is better for the city in the long run.
This, this, this new person would be able to be the zoning fireman at the front counter for zoning questions that pop up without grabbing senior staff person
Building permit and sign review, more routine things, yes.
Instead of dragging in a senior staff person to get into a simple zoning question.
Correct.
You know, granted, you might get a case that walks to the front counter that's pretty complicated that that individual can't handle, and that's where you refer it to somebody more experienced, but on the most cases, your general questions coming up are going to be able to handle, be handled by this individual.
Right. And the thought is with qualifications for a Planner One, which is an entry-level planner, it is those kinds of experiences that are very instructive and educational in the early part of their career anyway. it is those kinds of experiences that are very instructive and educational in the early part of their career anyway. I even did those at one time, if you can believe that. Still do them today when needed.
Any other questions? Alright, Council Whiting, motion?
I'll move to approve the job description for the Planner One and authorize staff to advertise for applicants and begin the selection process.
Alright, do you have a second?
A second.
So, Council Sherman, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before you take a vote on this item, I just wanted to make the council aware that this is actually kind of half of the action that we would like you to take. Similar to two weeks ago, we dealt with the retirement of our longtime deputy city clerk through the promotion of the records clerk, the updating of job descriptions and then posting for the more entry-level position. That is the goal here, which is to move our current Planner One up to a Planner Two position, provide additional training as well as additional responsibility and then backfill at the more entry-level position. The only reason those items are not side-by-side on the agenda tonight is that Mr. Leek and I are refining the skill set and the minimum qualifications of the Planner Two. We're gonna be pushing for a little more certification and formal training on that one. So that will be before you, two weeks from tonight. We just wanted to get this one going because it involves advertising and interviewing and those types of things. Every week that we can get started helps us out. So you will see kind of part B of this motion two weeks from tonight and that is to promote our current Planner One to the vacant Planner Two position.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can add by way of very brief background, you'll certainly see it in two weeks. Mr. Sabota, who will be proposing to be promoted to Planner Two, has been with the city as a full-time planner for eight years and within the past year completed a masters in public administration. So he has substantial experience as against what the requirements are for a Planner Two in the current job description. As Chris indicated, we are looking at requiring credentials of the more senior planning staff that we have not required in the past. That, by the way, would include me.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to item number eleven, council member reports. Start on this side, Council Sherman?
Yes, on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, I attended the Scott Communities Transit Review Board with Mr. Leek. And as he mentioned, the Metropolitan Council as well as Met Transit was there presenting to us in terms of a discussion around possible merger. So they are another candidate in addition to Southwest and MBTA. So Arlene McCarthy was there representing the Metropolitan Council. She's the director of Metropolitan Transportation Services. And then Brian Lamb, who's the general manager for Metro Transit, was there as well, answering similar questions to the other previous discussions that we've had. In my notes and in my reflection upon the meeting, I didn't, there wasn't anything that stood out necessarily that made them a better fit or a lesser fit than any of the other organizations. Of course, you know, there's history with the Metropolitan Council and Met Transit and the way that they have articulated their view on transit, kind of outside of the ring, so to speak. And I think that has been documented in different ways, but then has been addressed verbally in different ways. I felt that it was a pretty benign meeting. I didn't, there wasn't anything inflammatory about the discussion or whatnot. So it'll be a discussion with the Transit Review Board in order to determine how we proceed with these different candidates. And our next meeting, we're kind of going between July twenty-fourth and thirty-first at this point in time. So I don't know where that meeting's going to land in the next couple of weeks to sort of recap. So that is an update on transit.
Perfect. Councilman Lehman?
The one sixty-nine corridor coalition gave me the month off, which is awesome. They didn't have a meeting this month. Derby Days needs volunteers. Volunteers, they need more volunteers. Did I say Derby Days needed volunteers?
I heard Derby Days needed volunteers.
Yeah, I think Derby Days does need volunteers.
Just so you know, I signed up to volunteer last night.
Okay, very good. Thank you. ShockPDerbyDays.com. Visit the website, sign up, volunteer. Tell me you want a free ice cream cone.
Come and play bingo.
Free ice cream cone and maybe some free pop or something. Donations are always nice to have too, so they're putting final touches on it. I think they put out their final event schedule. Got to peek at that. Looks like it's gonna be a pretty good time this year again. So volunteer.
Council Whiting?
And you mentioned you had a meeting off. Scale took the month off also, but that's nice to have. But on Thursday, July ninth, I did meet with residents of Levy Drive Apartments along with Alan Herman from the Smart Link, the transit supervisor. We discussed the transit issues and concerns. Mr. Herman was very helpful in explaining the differences in service, including the circulator, dial-a-ride and metro mobility. There is still a concern from residents about the safety of access to the circulator bus and I'm recommending to the city and the county staff to look at moving the bus stop there fifty yards to the north so that residents can walk out their sidewalk right to the bus stop and not have to go around the corner when it's all covered with snow and things. So just trying to make it a little safer for people over there. Tomorrow, July seventeenth, is the chamber board. They meet at eight AM at Turtle's Social Club. I will not be able to attend, so if someone can attend that meeting for me, if they're available, eight AM at Turtle's. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On Monday, the eighth of July, I had a regional council and mayor's meeting. It was together with Urban Land Institute and a couple of the groups, continuing working on Greater MSP Ahead is a program that is mapping out future regional initiatives and how we continue to attract people to the region and lead as a metro. And so that was very good. It was the third meeting we've had for that. And if you go to greatermspahead.com, you will find, they have a bunch of videos and other things. It's a really, they've worked really hard on having a lot of intergenerational work and very diverse group of folks and it's a really interesting thing to watch happen. Then on July ninth, through Scale, we met with Commissioner Zelli from Mindot to put our support behind completing the environmental worksheet, environmental, the EIS for Forty-One River Crossing. That will solidify, that should be done as long as things continue the way they are. It'll be done by May of 2014 and when that is adopted and approved, that will solidify the route for Forty-One across the river and over the next, you know, thirty, forty years, be able to start accumulating property and to go through that corridor. And so that will be moving forward because it was, they were at the same point back in the late seventies and they never committed to the plan and so the plan died and now we're back in the same place as we were at that point. And then that is all I've got. Item number twelve, other business. Anything else? Alright, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to Monday, July twenty-ninth at seven PM. Council Whiting?
Motion to adjourn till Monday, July twenty-ninth at seven PM.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So, Councilman Lehman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are adjourned at eight fifteen.